Welcome Nottingham to our Board of Selectmen meeting February 28, 2022. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we go into business, I'd like to take a moment and recognize Bonnie McKinnon for her years of service as a town moderator, 11 years to be exact. And March 8th will be her last town election that she'll be doing as a town moderator. So, you know, thank you Bonnie on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and on behalf of the Town of Nottingham. We thank you for your years of service and dedication and we wish you well.
Can I say one thing? Also, the Planning Board is losing Dirk Rottenheiss, who's been the chair for nine years or longer on the Planning Board. He is no longer signing up for another term. So, he would be valued in this. He was a great leader for the Planning Board over the past couple of years. So Dirk, thank you for what you did. And if you ever want to come back, please do.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifests? Any questions, comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of February 21st, 2022, and the payroll manifest of February 22nd, 2022.
Okay. We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Approve minutes from February 7th and the 17th. Does everybody have an opportunity to look those over? Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for February 7th and February 17th.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Sign boards and committees, budgets didn't meet. Planning Board?
One thing too, the Planning Board did have, we went over some subdivisions. A lot of conceptual reviews. One that was going to be off Smoke Street, which could be a potential 20-house subdivision or so. Then we had, which is again conceptual reviews. We were going over plans on how they might do. Then we also had the meeting who came in for the Route 4 property. And again, what he's planning on, might be doing for another conceptual review for projects and buildings that were going up over there. So, it was a pretty long and tense meeting. It's almost 10 o'clock, so. But, a lot of stuff going on. It's not quieting down.
Okay. CIP didn't meet today? You guys are done until next season?
No, no, it's done until next year.
300?
300, we had...
Did we get the CIP report? Or is it just in there?
It's, it's, it is in the book.
Oh, okay.
I did mail out the final at one point.
I never saw it.
I can send it again.
Sorry, Tyler.
300 we had last week, and we had the Boyd-Pugh United Basketball Tournament. Very rough. Same day they had the high, the high round of Marston.
Nice.
Good. Do you know how many people showed up for that?
I'm not sure.
Oh, cool.
Nice.
Nice. Excellent.
Pull that over to you.
Okay. Any updates on Marston, Dora? No. Town Administrator Report.
Just a couple of things. Town report in as of 2:30 this afternoon. It will start to appear around town. We got started today on distribution, but it'll be at the library and the school and lyres and all the usual places. Town on one side, school on the other. It's one book for both, as usual. Thanks to Kelly Delaire for spearheading that. I don't know. It's done. There you go. This is your last meeting before the election. Couple of things from the moderator. One, she'd like to know when you're all going to be there. You typically pick a schedule of yourselves to have a quorum of yourselves there. If you want to do that tonight, or if you want to do it electronically, doesn't matter. She'd love the information now, but up to you. If you want to start with something like that, you can, or you can just talk it through.
I think it'd probably be if the board's okay with it, just send it to her electronically.
Yeah, that's fine. I gotta look at my calendar anyway.
So, you'll let her know when you'll be there?
Yep.
I have the whole day off, so whatever I have to do to tell them, let me know.
Cool. She told us this morning that voting will be mask optional. We'll be emphasizing distancing, but one, one flow of voters generally. No separate locations, separate processes or whatever for masked or unmasked people. So, that settles that. And the ballot machine testing, they run through a set of tests on the ballot machine once the programming card comes in. That programming card was late, so they've had to delay the testing until Wednesday. That was originally posted for tomorrow. So, ballot machine testing will be on Wednesday instead of Tuesday. And that's all posted in the usual places. But, other than that, I think we're ready for election. We'll have set up the afternoon before, which is pretty easy. And then just a long day for everybody on Tuesday. Unless you all have questions or concerns or facility worries or anything. Can't learn anything from the weather yet, but...
Do you know if it's too late for people to get absentee ballots?
It is not. They can walk into the town clerk's office whenever they're open and fill out a form. It's getting late to do that by mail to get it, to get your application in, get it back to you, and then get it, for you to get it back to the town clerk. It's, you might be out of time there, but in-person absentee is still viable right up until the day before. They have to be back in by election day at sometime of day. I want to say 5:00, but I'm mistaken. And I think that's all I've got for you for now.
Action, voting, reviews from last meeting? What do we have?
Minutes say recycling center fees and a Conservation Commission letter, which I'm assuming are the two things we have on our business.
What was the conservation letter? Well, that's the hearing.
Oh, oh, oh.
Also been communicating with them about road salt. That might be it too. That was one that you...
That was something I brought up. That was mentioned to me.
That may be what you brought up at the last meeting.
For reduced road salt over our watershed areas.
Yeah, I've been going back and forth with Susan Mooney about how to, how to ask you for something, how to present something to you that is a little more specific than...
Yes.
Hey, do this. So, just looking at what other towns do, let us see where we are with the state, that kind of thing. So, I think you've seen that letter already, but there's been, you haven't had, been asked to do anything specifically yet.
Okay. Assessing? We've got a lot here. Break it up into chunks here, or actually we've got quite a few that are the same. Everybody had a chance to review them?
Yep.
Any questions, comments? Somebody going into the Conservation Department? If there isn't, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on the Select Board to approve the veterans' credits for MAP 7, Lot 2N-7, and MAP 24, Lot 140-3.
Second. Are you going to do them all? You're going to do the other ones?
Separate.
All separate.
Right. That was Lot 24, 140-3?
Yeah, the two veterans' credits.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
I'll make a motion on the Select Board to approve the land use change tax for MAP 6, Lot 22-1, MAP 24, Lot 141-2D, MAP 40, Lot 1-1, MAP 40, Lot 1-4, MAP 40, Lot 1-6, MAP 6, Lot 22-2, MAP 40, Lot 1-2, and MAP 40, Lot 1-5.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay. General business. Special license and applications, water crafts? Any thoughts on this? Looks like they did everything they needed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what there really is for us to do on it. There's really, I mean, what, what is the expectation of action on our part at this point?
Did they get everything cleared though? I mean, because we had that, the guy was regoing against the zoning boards the second time around.
Yep. So, this has, 2019 you first saw this, and you, well, let's even back up before that. The law gives you, the board, the right to license competitive events like this. You know, you can license roller skating and rope tosses and this collection of weird things, and also competitions. And this is a competition for fees and money. So, that's where your authority comes in. You, when this appeared in 2019, really didn't have a framework to think about it because nobody had proposed anything like this, or they'd just done it without asking. So, you at that time approved a special event license policy and process. That policy is really laid out to make sure that we're checking all of the kind of safety, health, and welfare aspects of these more than, and that's what the board and your staff are generally looking at, is those kinds of things. In 2019, you, you said to us, "Don't enforce anything. Let them go forward with it as long as they get Planning Board approval for this use of the land for any future events," which would have been 2020, one, 2021. Sorry, move everything forward a year. Started in 2020. They spent 2021 before the Planning Board and the Zoning Board getting approvals for things, essentially. It took a very long time to get through those processes. Planning Board is done with the site plan approval and approved it. The Zoning Board approved the variance to allow the use, but that Zoning Board decision has been appealed to Superior Court. So, the approvals are all in place. Unless the court tells us otherwise, we proceed with the approvals as they stand. The Zoning Board's decision will be the subject of a court hearing next week, and we will get a decision from the court on whether they uphold the ZBA in time for this event or not. ZBA cases, that Superior Court moved to the front of the line, and they get dealt with relatively quickly. So, we expect that we'll hear from the court on the ZBA case well before the first event here. So, what I suggested is that you approve it pending that, all coming out in the town's favor. This is the town that's been sued in this case. The applicant here is an authorized party to the case. They will be submitting stuff to the court. And so, that's where this all sits. The approvals are on place. The site plan approval process for the Planning Board covered the vast majority of things that you heard from the staff when you first heard about this. Fire chiefs, the health officer, police chief, all weighed in to the conditions and the site plan process, and that stuff is very well detailed in the, in the site plan. So, all the health and safety people are fine with this application as it is. With a couple of things that I know, one's the ZBA. They didn't provide approval of insurance yet, and we have to work out details on police detail coverage, which they had no trouble with last time. Just too early to schedule such things. So, that is how you get to where you are here. And you're, generally speaking, your, your purview is, is public health and safety. You can define that how you, how you want, you know, safety, health, and welfare. You can, you can interpret that how you wish. So, you, you've got plenty of latitude with this.
The ZBA, they granted their variance, or whatever, variance. So, who is this bringing against the ZBA?
A Butters. It's a, it's a collection of Butters and people, I guess I would say within earshot. It's a, it's a group of individuals, including Director Butters.
It was, it was a process, a complaint against the process, the ZBA.
No, I think the, the, I haven't read the, I haven't read the complaint against the ZBA in a while, but it is on the substance. It is on, did the ZBA consider enough things?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And what the court will do, the court will essentially do one of three things. They will let the ZBA's decision stand. They will throw it out outright as being, and implement some other decision in place of the Zoning Board. Or remand it back to the ZBA and say, "Hear this again and consider X, Y, and Z that you didn't consider the first time." So, those are, those are generally what the court will do. In terms of likelihood of occurrence, it's much more likely that the court would remand and give it back to the ZBA if the court felt that the process was flawed or there was some other, something missing. The court doesn't want to step in the way of the ZBA unless it has to. So, we'll, we'll hear that, I bet, in April, that answer.
We're seeking approval of this tonight unless the courts decide differently?
That's what I would, yes. If you're comfortable with the concept and with the plan, if you were to approve the license, then the applicant could then move forward with their planning. They're now about three months ahead of their first date, right? Their first one's in May. So, it's probably, I haven't spoken to them in a while, but it's probably getting to the point where they need to start making commitments and advertising and doing what they got to do to have a successful event at 90 days out. They need an answer from you, and they're, they're waiting on the court, just like we are. But if you're comfortable making decisions, go right ahead. If you need more information, we do have time to do that, and we can get the applicant in if you want.
So, tell me if you think this is right, Chris. I, I think the way, if I were to make a motion that we approve it, is that the wording would be something like, you know, approval conditional based on the denial of the Superior Court appeal of the ZBA decision, denial of the appeal, pending the outcome of it, plus delivery of proof of insurance and plan for police detail coverage. So, what I'm saying is I want to tie both of those in, in addition to the, to the case. Even though they don't, I mean, they have to provide it 14 days before. We get a week out and they don't have it, I want us to be able to have that coverage there.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that works.
So, you're going to make the motion?
Yeah. What did I say? So, I will make a motion that we approve the special event license application relative to the Water Cross events pending the outcome of the Supreme, the appeal to the Supreme Court on the ZBA decision, which would be, I'm going to have to word this better for you. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the special event Water Cross event pending a Superior Court denial of the appeal of the ZBA decision, as well as delivery of proof of insurance at least 14 days prior to the event, and a detailed police detail coverage plan to the satisfaction of the chief 14 days prior to the event.
Second.
Are you intending that to be all three events that they've asked for, or just the first?
Well, I would, I was assuming that they would use the same plan for all three events.
They will.
Yeah. So, I was applying it to all three.
Okay. Just making sure.
So, we motion? Tyler, you second it? Okay. All in favor?
One thing before we actually do that. On their event license here, it says applicant agrees at its sole expense to defend and hold harmless the town of Conway.
Oh, that's, no, that's our application. That's, that's us stealing an application from them, and I just have to fix that.
But ours will say Nottingham and not Conway.
The actual license will say, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if we were looking...
No, that's our, that's our application.
Call somebody else, John. Well, I just wanted to fix, well, I don't know.
I saw that recently too and said, oops.
Okay.
Good test, John.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, we, we stole this whole thing from the town of Conway.
So, were you in favor?
Yes, I'm fine.
All right, so it's unanimous. Lauren, sorry. All right. Recycling center fees and policies.
I think we can probably do this in less than 10 minutes. So, I have finished the tabulation of the year-end numbers. Those are the charts that you have. I'll just walk you through those real quick and pull out a couple of highlights. The first page is just total volume by weight. Our, our volume continues to go up. It was somewhere between 4.5% and 5% last year in total volume. Very consistent growth there, which is outpacing the population growth by a little bit, so...
So, it's increased volume for expense materials, whereas revenue materials have stayed relatively flat?
Yep. Yeah, what we call revenue materials or anything that we get some revenue doesn't mean that it's profitable for us, but it's like, as you'll see later, paper is a revenue item, but it actually costs us a fortune to recycle it. So, it's a revenue item, but in really a main moment. No, not, nothing really surprising jumping out of the numbers. If you go to the next page, you'll see a breakdown by the type of materials. We saw an increase in MSW to municipal solid waste that we had attributed to the pandemic two years ago. We said, "Well, people are at home more. They're doing more at home. They're generating more trash." We figured that's probably what was causing that, and that, that elevated level and the trend continued, you know, we're up again from that at about the same clip we've been increasing. The, the most significant increases continue to be in construction and demolition debris and bulky waste. That's expensive to get rid of, and it's also where we do the bulk of our business outside of MSW. That trend continues. The pace, I guess, slowed just a little bit from the year before, but that's our fastest-growing material. Everything else is pretty constant.
Tell me again, what we define as MSW?
That's everything that goes in the compactor.
Okay.
And nothing else. Yep. That goes to the turnkey landfill in Rochester. Everything else goes other places.
Okay.
The, the chart below that is cost per ton. So, you'll see, or the total, that's total cost, not total cost per ton. That's what we're spending. You see big increase again in, in C and D and bulky waste. That's a combination of increased volume and increased trucking costs. Trucking is what's really driving this in many cases. The cost to dispose has gone up a little bit, but the cost to move it from Nottingham to wherever it goes has gone up markedly. That's where, that's, that's the biggest driver. Same story as last year. Fuel costs doing what they're doing this year. I bet that's going to happen again. That's really what's, what's driving this for us.
Chris, do you, do you put this out to bid for other companies to see if they, they're more competitive in pricing, at least for the trucking aspect of it?
The trucking aspect is tough because you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, either we have to buy the roll-off dumpsters, or we get them from the trucking companies, and we only have a couple of options in that arena. So, we did kind of feel out the market about a year and a half ago on that and decided to stay where we were.
Do you think it might be feasible to look again, especially with the cost of fuel and all that rising?
Yeah, well, we will, we will test that periodically. It's, there's just not a lot of options when, unless we were to go out and invest in a whole lot of dumpsters, which is, which really changes the, you know, you need to have more than what you see when you go there, because while you're shipping them, you have to have them in place sometimes. So, it's a, it's a sizable investment to do that. Maybe in the, in the context of doing something globally different there, that might make sense, but probably on its own. Last time we looked at it, we felt like it wouldn't make, and we've even kicked around the idea of, well, why don't we just truck it ourselves, you know, but we don't have the right kind of truck, so. You know, then you start talking about, well, how do you pair up with another town? And the scheduling of that gets tricky because we're all, we're all going to the dump on Saturday, and, right? So, we're poking around trying to find ways to do this differently, but we haven't, we haven't found much. Just one more thing to call, maybe the third page, I just wanted to bring to your attention. This is a per-ton cost of different materials, and I just wanted to show you the green line. The green line is paper. So, the, the, we get a little bit, when we, when we deliver paper to be recycled, we get a little bit of money for it, but we have to ship it to Massachusetts or Nashua to get it to be processed, and that cost has gone through the roof. So, we're now paying on a per-ton basis about two and a half times more to recycle the paper than we would if we just threw it in the compactor. So, recycling is costing us extra in that case, not because of, trucking is really what's, what's driving that, because we have to, we have to bring it so far. I'm not suggesting we not recycle paper, it's a, you know...
But recycling in general has never been a get-rich scheme or making money scheme.
No, there's, the, the, the best value is in not putting it in the landfill and paying, you know, X number of dollars a ton to do that. Usually, you can look at all those recyclable materials, and you look at this graph, and you say all the lines are below the red line for MSW. That means it's cheaper to recycle than it is to throw it in the, in the compact. It's just right now, paper isn't, that isn't the case. One, one quirky operational thing that, that we run into, or starting to run into more often is, for, for a very long time, the MSW compactor has about been filled up once a week. About, like Wednesday morning, Waste Management comes and swaps out the dumpster for the compactor and away we go, empties it, and it's, it hovers around full. The last couple of years, more and more, we are exceeding the capacity of that in a, in a week. So, we're right at the, at the tipping point on that. You, you may have noticed an overflow dumpster there at times. That's there for, oh God, the compactor's full and it's 11 o'clock on Saturday morning. Like, what do we, how do we get through to the next delivery? We're, we've been hovering around that tipping point more often, and it's gonna, it's gonna mess us up somehow sometime soon. We don't know how to fix that yet, except for that overflow thing. So, it's, it's going to keep costing us a little bit more than it would otherwise because we're hovering around that tipping point.
And that's the largest compactor we can get?
Yeah. Well, we could get another one, you know? It's not, not unheard of to have two, but we're nowhere near that need in volume. We need 1.1 right now.
Gotcha.
That, I only tell you that story because you're going to hear it again somehow, and there's going to be some kind of need to solve that somehow, probably with money. We don't know what that is yet, but you're, you're going to hear that story again, unless we find a way to, you know, dramatically reduce the, the overall flow, which would take a big change in some way. So, that is the quick and dirty recap on 2021. Couple of weeks ago, we brought some fee schedule changes to you. This is the finalized... the finalized proposal, all the numbers are the same, um, we had, uh, we had a messy tire, uh, menu that we just kind of pulled off here and said, see the staff and, and we'll customize it to the specialized tires, but, um, you, what you're seeing here is, uh, as we talked about a few weeks ago, small increases in mostly the bulky waste and C and D stuff where that volume and cost increases are coming from, um, uh, small increases there in an effort to offset that cost, so, um, if you have further questions about that, we can do that, or you can approve this revised fee schedule if you're comfortable with it.
Just to refresh my memory, is, uh, those mer, those old mercury bulbs, are those cons, those are considered hazardous and they won't, we don't take those, right? We're doing mercury bulbs?
CFLs. Right, yes, no, those are hazardous, yeah, we take fluorescents, complex fluorescents, two fluorescents, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
And tires are undercover now?
Um, most, maybe not all.
Good, we have that much?
Uh, it's a frequency of pickup.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Kind of thing, uh, late in the cycle, I, I would be surprised if they were.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? No?
No.
You need a motion, Chris, I imagine?
Yeah, this, since this is fee setting, you should do that with a vote.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, the select board approved the updated recycling center, uh, fee schedule.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Four to one?
Uh, if I could just pile one more note on that, um, we have been talking with, uh, our staff up there as well as our insurance people, uh, around how to, if we need to, um, adapt to the adoption of the warrant article about dumpster diving. Um, there really isn't a lot that we can do from a policy perspective, the, as the, as the lawyer's opinion told you, the, the voters, the town, uh, controls that function under law, so we can't really, in interpreting the, the will of the voters in the language of that warrant article, there's not a lot of room for us to get in the way of, of that, not that we want to get in the way, but we do want to do it as safely and, uh, with, you know.
So there's nothing that we can do to say, you can't physically go in the dumpster?
Yeah.
Uh, I think that, that is opening the town up to liability and, 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 God forbid someone gets hurt.
Yeah, we've, we've got to ask, uh, just for some common sense, I mean, uh, you know, the, uh...
Can't we put a sign up there, you know, if somebody says they want to throw it away, just leave it on the ground, somebody pick it up rather than go in the dumpster?
Uh, yeah, it just turns into, uh, what's worthy of sitting on that ledge and what goes in the dumpster and who manages that process and...
There's three guys up there already and they can't even manage what, the traffic flow beating that comes in, you can't.
It'd be the same problem we had with the, with the swap shop, right? With nobody available to monitor it, you know, people are leaving hazardous waste and all kinds of craziness and that, so it's just that same problem.
So, I think in the voter guide, Chris, um, refresh my memory, in the, in the voter guide, did we express our concern about that warrant article from a safety standpoint?
Not af, no, you, you suggested an amendment at the deliberative session and I don't think the voter guide speaks to anything like that after deliberative session, I think we might have cleaned that up, cause there's... You could, you can do that if you all want to do that, but it's, uh, that would be a departure.
Oh, that was, that was pre-deliberative session?
That was the last time you may have discussed that, but you've, with the petition warrant articles in the voter, we only done the voter guard once, but you have not wandered into steering in that content, you know what I mean?
Yep.
You've not expressed opinion.
Yep.
Uh, in the voter guide about, uh, the outcome of petition warrant articles, you've done that at deliberative session as a board, but you didn't do it in the, in the voter guide, so you, it's, you certainly can, it's your, your product, but you, that's not something you've done before.
Well, that guide's already been posted on the website, right?
Yeah, but it's editable, I mean, it's, yeah.
I'm just, what I'm trying to understand is, is, is there a way, given this particular one and the, the significant safety risk, if this is something that the board should publish a statement on or make a statement about it? And what would be the vehicle for doing that?
And, and not to mention, like, you know, people that are gonna take the, you know, the, the materials that we get money for, cause that's gonna hurt the recycling center, right?
Yeah, I mean, you'd, you'd have to fill up a lot of trucks to move the numbers, uh, either, either in reducing our, our tipping fees by, you know, pulling things out of the dumpster or, that, that's, yes, it is a concern, but it's not a huge.
It's not gonna hurt us anymore than this, but, but I, I do think that the, the safety issue is important.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that we've tried to think through is, what, what's reasonable to ask our staff to do in terms of enforcing things, you know, it's, um, it's gotta be clear and it's gotta be something that's perceived to be reasonable, um...
Yeah, I'm just talking about voter education.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about voter education.
So, again, I'm just trying to wrap my head, safety here, so are we supposed to provide them a ladder to get in and out of the dumpster?
No. No, we don't, I'm not gonna encourage it.
I mean, but just how far are we gonna let this, I mean, cause right now, they'll be jumping in and then if you jump in, you hit a sharp piece of metal, goes right through your leg, you know?
Yeah, those are, those are possible, those are possible outcomes and we're not thrilled with them, but we don't...
I mean, does a sign on the dumpsters, you know, saying, you enter the dumpster at your own risk, does that help us or?
No.
Let's, I mean, if we're gonna get somebody, we're, we're supposed to be, you know, all about safety or whatever.
Right.
Somebody gets hit on the head, I mean, I don't know, I could just see, there's a lot of sue happy people around here too that, I, again, there shouldn't be anybody, if you're in the dumpsters while people are using the, the, the dump itself, whatever, if there's a, give them a half hour or whatever, scammer through there, they shouldn't be in there while people are trying to do what they, they want to get rid of their trash and leave, it's not a frigging carnival, it's not a circus, so, and if anybody takes metals or whatever, that's ours, I mean, it's, it's ours to, to do what we want with it, not for somebody to come in and say, hey, I'm looking for all the copper that's in the dumpster, that's stealing, stealing copper is a federal offense too, so, I don't know, I got problems with it.
So Tyler, how far do you wanna go with this?
I wanna go with, leave it like it is, I mean, it's really, again, if there's furniture or somebody wants it or whatever, hey, have at it, stay out of the dumpster. It shouldn't be in the dumpsters at all, I don't think, if somebody gets hurt, we're gonna, the town's gonna pay, I think the taxpayers should know that, the responsibility, come on the town and we'll pay the penalty, whatever it is, stay out of the dumpster, if there's furniture, dollhouses I heard or whatever, put them to the side, let them take them and so be it.
So that's my point, I think, to Tyler, is that at face value, if you're going to vote for the first time on Tuesday and you're reading that for the first time, you're gonna interpret it as saying, yeah, that's a great idea, why can't I take what I want from the recycling center, right? Somehow, I think, the, the concerns that this board has need to be communicated as well, so that peoples can see the other side of it, and I don't know if there's risk in us doing that as a board?
No.
But, I don't know, what are you, what are you thinking?
I really just hope people that, that do decide to take things out will do it in a responsible manner and not go in there and be, you know, cowboy and trying to get, you know, searched through and moving things around, if it's on top, they take it, fine, usually they have the pole there that people used to grab and pull things out of, in all my years, I never saw anybody actually get inside a dumpster, but again, I'm not there all day long, so I can't say that has it ever happened, but I just hope that people, you would want to think that they have the right and the restraint to, to make a good, proper decision on how to retrieve something, um, you know, that's only gonna be worth a dollar.
We had somebody in it a couple of weeks ago.
It happens, yeah.
Yeah, we had somebody in it a couple of weeks ago, in anticipation of the warrant article passing. I, I...
I don't think there's gonna be a right way or a wrong way, I mean, best we can do is put signs up for right now and probably just address it that way and just see, see how it unfolds, and we can play under the presumption that something bad's gonna happen, which there's, not saying there isn't a chance it's happening, but do we live by, I mean...
Well, do we be, do we, so, I'm not, I'm just...
No, absolutely, that's what we're here to talk about.
Do we be reactive or proactive?
Pro.
Right? And that, all, all I'm saying is a statement that makes people consider the other side. I, I, I would hope...
Like a postcard or something or a flyer?
Yeah, I mean, even something that gets posted on the internet, right? Cause...
Town website.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have time to do a flyer or anything like that, but, um...
That's true, yeah, it's only a week away.
Yeah. Uh, I'm with you, John, I hope that people would show restraint and reasonable, um, you know, in, in how they approach it, but I also wonder if we have, as a board, have an obligation to raise what the impact could be on the town.
Absolutely.
And I also just want to say, the people that we know that are gonna be actually probably trying to go and get, we already get an idea of who they are, they're gonna be the same people that are weekly doing it.
Yep.
You know, it's not gonna be, and most of the people that want this to pass are want it because of the fact that they do want to take some scrap wood out of there because they're building something at their house and that they need it for, you know, if you brought up such, bunch of different little situations, that deliberation.
Okay, so, so what I'm sensing here is that we should have something put together and put on the web, on the website.
Yeah, we'll put an FYI, sure.
Alright, so, we'll work on that and then, uh, get it up in a couple of days, uh, if you're all good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, so, uh, we ran a little late here, uh, for our seven o'clock appointment, Mr. Gonzalez, feel free to come up to the table, please introduce yourself and your address.
Yeah, Frank Gonzalez, 113 Kelsey Road, and I've, I've got four copies of a quick letter.
Okay, start, start, yeah.
Yeah, well, is it the same thing you sent me?
It's the same thing, yeah.
Okay, cause they have what you sent me already, but if you've got something new, then give it to...
Our, our, over, um, email to me as well.
Okay, yeah, you, uh, start, start over there and I'll get the scraps when they're...
Basically, what I'd like to do tonight is make a request. My question, extra copies, good. This is the backup documentation with a request in front.
Okay, this is the same?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton doesn't have one?
Thank you. Been in town forty-five years and I don't know anybody.
Okay.
Not this group.
Alright.
Do you have one for me?
Huh?
You don't have one for me?
I have four, that's, well, I'll give you one of the base, base letters and all the documentation, I, I've sort it with the other ones.
Oh, Donna.
Nope, there you go.
Thank you.
Some photos, um, like I say, just want to make the recommendation tonight.
Yep, but if you have a seat and then you, again, state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, Frank Gonzalez, 113 Kelsey Road. Been in town forty-five years now.
Okay, and go ahead and present your...
Okay, essentially, we've got a situation with myself and my neighbor, we have wells that are twenty-five to thirty feet from the roadway.
Yep.
Been talking to DES, open conquer, in detail, and the current recommendation is seventy-five feet from a property line or from a contamination source, road salt is definitely a contamination source, so I'm basically saying, can you folks give our grandfather a sin so we don't have a problem? I just had my well, you know, water chested, I'm under the limits on, on chloride, two thirty, limits, not two fifty, I'll be watching it because they've been dumping a lot of salt on that road. With a half, with a half inch snowstorm, they hit us eight times with salt, so I'm just asking that we make that a salt-free zone.
Okay.
And then if you'd like to discuss this in finer detail, I can definitely do that, I can talk to you, have Steve...
Well, I mean, we could take this, uh, information, take it under advisement and, uh...
In past, Johnny Fernil never salted the road.
Okay.
Um, the drivers knew, they didn't, they didn't even put down road, road sand, got, sand is fine, all the sand you want, but the salt is, is a environmental hazard, there used to be twenty, uh, reservoirs that were in, in jeopardy in the state, now there's fifty from road salt.
Okay.
So it's an issue that I'd like to have you folks take a look at and let us know.
Okay, I appreciate you presenting this, like I said, we'll take it under advisement and then...
Jane Stevens is in her eighties, her husband's in his nineties, the next door neighbor, their well is about thirty feet from the road as well, she's not gonna be here tonight, but, um, her husband's been in and out of the hospital quite a bit.
Okay.
So, I mean, Frank, you see you are on a no-salt zone and where would the zone be? The all of...
Kelsey West Lane.
Kelsey West, okay.
Just West Lane now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's his request.
No, no, I think the road is just West Lane now, isn't it?
Oh, that's, no, yes, just the name of the road is West Lane.
Yeah.
It's off of Kelsey.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, this has been going on for quite a while and I sent Chris a letter, but a year, no, a year ago February, an email, and that email...
Yeah, we've gone, we've gone back, we've gone back a ways on this one.
Yeah, do we get any input from Sean?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, the, the same, same thing I wrote to, to Mr. Gonzalez, it's, um, you know, we have an obligation to keep the road passable for everybody that travels on it, it's, it's, yes, it's a different kind of road in that it's short and it's a dead end, but it's a class five road, so, um, it's, it's, you, we want to apply the same generally...
So they're using strictly salt or is it a salt-sand mix or...
Uh, same thing, it, it doesn't get any different treatment than any other asphalt road, whatever Kelsey gets.
It certainly does, Chris. They've, they've tripled the amount of salt on a half inch, you know, snowstorm, he's been by salting down, salting back eight times in a half inch, Kelsey Road gets it once. So I think that, um, we need to address this, cause my well, I started hitting some bad numbers.
Mr. Gonzalez, like I said, we'll take it under advisement and we'll discuss it.
Benjamin, thank you very much.
We'll discuss it and we'll be sure to get back to you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Also, just a couple of quick points, um, several years ago when the school was being built, I had two tractor loads of furniture delivered here, I think this conference table is part of it, but the police department offloaded it for me and I've been a contributor in town for a long time, my wife and I were on the fire department.
Okay.
For eight years. Anyway, gentlemen?
Thank you, Frank.
Ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Conservation Commission.
We're seeing an awful lot of you guys this year.
Yeah. Great.
I'm out of space here.
I'm gonna need that.
Yeah, sorry.
You don't have to get up there.
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
There's some gossip with Mr. Reed, but...
You're not supposed to talk in the audience, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for scheduling us on a, kind of a short notice there, but it came to our attention that there was a, a couple of easements on, on a particular property, on John Tenenckel's property on Case Road that didn't have management plans, uh, so you can't really do anything until the management plans are in place. I, I thought, since there were two separate easements, that it was gonna require, you know, two separate management plans, but apparently the person doing the management plans has decided to, she can put up all on one management plan, so we're only gonna ask for four thousand dollars rather than eight thousand dollars.
Leading with the good news.
Anyway, my name is Sam Demerit, I chair the Conservation Commission and I'll, uh, open the public hearing to expend the four thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund for the management plans for two easements on John Tenenckel's property on Case Road. plans for two easements on John Trinanco's property on Case Road. And I see we have a quorum here, and there's four members of the Conservation Commission here, there's Susan Mooney, Cheryl Smith, Deb Kimball, and then from our Trails Committee is Celia Abrams, who has been pretty, you know, a close neighbor to John for a number, a few years, and has been pretty interested in his property, as far as how things go in there.
And helping him with the property and the maintenance of the property as well, so...
So, anyway, that was the, you know, the gist of it, you know, we're looking for, draw out $4,000 from the Conservation Fund for the management plan for these two separate easements on one, John Trinanco's property.
So, I have a question, Sam, so, was it two years ago that we had the similar situation with the same property, and we approved, I think, like, $2,000 for the development of a stewardship plan?
That was the William E. Kennard parcel.
Okay, so, different parcel, okay.
It's the same sort of thing, a stewardship plan that got exactly details out what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Okay. That's all I wanted to make sure, was it the same property?
Absolutely, they did, and the $4,000, that's on...
Yes, yes. And when Selt and Fairpaud do most of their easements, now they incorporate a stewardship management plan fee into their easements. So, during that process, so did one just recently, and the table's easement that passed that...
So, it's, it doesn't typically come up as a separate ask?
Now, it doesn't, I think.
Now, it doesn't, right.
Most of the time, they're looking at these, but the fact that Trinanco was done so long ago...
Yep.
And then also, the Kennard was something that was a town purchase, but we had to set up someone to monitor the easement.
Yep.
You can't do it, because it's owned by the town.
Okay.
It often accompanies the property deed, when deeds are transferred, so the new owner will understand what is permitted and what is not permitted.
Ah, okay.
A relatively new thing, I think. Is that correct? The stewardship plan?
That's a, well, the Trinanco easement, which the first one was back in nineteen ninety-three, and I think that was before we even had the Conservation Fund, perhaps.
Yes.
And that easement was actually donated by the landowner, so it didn't cost the town anything to put it in conservation. But the more recent, the fifteen-acre parcel that's part of this request, was completed in twenty eighteen, and it's very specific in the easement deed, the requirement for the stewardship plan, and what it, what its goals are, and what, what it will contain. So, it not only looks at all the values of the natural resources on the site, but it guides the landowner and us, as we're monitoring the easement, how to manage it, so that you best preserve those values. So, that's something that's, it's not included in the easement deed, the actual how-to manage it, so that you protect all of these values.
And that's really the purpose of the management plan, is to make sure that the value of that property, and the value of the easement, doesn't decrease by mismanagement or not following what was outlined in the easement, or park reserves, or features, or habitat, or urban pools, or whatever it might be, as features have better value of the property. And so that somebody doesn't, you know, cut down a bunch of trees, or dump a bunch of stuff on the property that would increase the value of that easement property.
I happen to be the one, being John's neighbor, who monitors those easement parcels for the Conservation Commission, even though I'm not on the commission anymore, I still do the easement monitoring for them. And he always has questions to ask me about how should he deal with this situation, and we have a lot of invasive plants on one of the parcels, for instance. And because I'm a volunteer, I'm not a professional, I feel uncomfortable giving him advice that is my best guess, but it's not professional advice. And the Conservation Commission has an obligation, as the easement holder, to maintain the values of the easement, and make sure that the conditions are being, the easement conditions are being met.
On behalf of the town?
Yes. I would say, I've been John's neighbor for fifteen years, and it's been his goal, as long as I can remember, to put all of his land in easement, so that it would be protected from development, and also so that it would be enjoyed by the residents of the town. He's put locking trails on it, and he's, just in twenty nineteen, he completed easements on all two hundred and fifty-five acres that he owns. So, that's a great chunk of natural undeveloped land that the town will benefit from, both for enjoyment, and our water quality, and air quality, and the wildlife habitat that it contains.
Does a part of his property protect an aquifer in that area as well?
Yes, several of the pieces he has in easement with NRCS are Wetlands Reserve Program resources, specifically to protect the water resources.
Okay.
This is not on all of those, is it, on the two particular ones that the town has interested?
Yes.
I think the Conservation Commission has already voted to expend the funds from the Conservation Fund for the management plan, and knowing now that it's, it's gonna be one plan for the two properties, it's only four thousand rather than eight thousand, so there's a decent savings there. Any other questions from the Board of Selectmen? Any, any, I'll open it up to the public, and I don't see any public out there.
Except for Gene.
Mr. Reed.
Oh. Didn't see it back there, Gene.
My personal opinion is, go for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
For proper uses of those.
So, at this point, I guess I will close the public hearing on the, on the expenditure of the $4,000 from the Conservation Fund for this, for the management plan for these two particular easements on Trinanco's property, and back to the Board of Selectmen.
So, what would happen if the board decided not to approve this?
Well, then, they don't get, don't get a plan, at this point, you know? I mean, it's where they're set up in this town, unlike some others, you know, you have to have votes from both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen in order to expend the funds.
This is the generator plan. I just wanna make sure I got my head reading, wrapped around this, based on reading this.
And the plan should, if we go ahead with it, the plan should be done by the first of August, I believe, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
We only do this plan once, right? One time, I think.
Just, just once, with a plan.
Yeah, I see, one of the, one of the things you just said that I think, you know, occurs to me as a really good point, is that the plan goes with the land.
It does, no matter who owns it.
And so, it doesn't result in...
Hundred years from now, the plan will be there.
Yep.
I, I just wanna correct that a little bit, a stewardship plan, it's intended to be refreshed every ten years, because conditions change, and best practices may change.
Okay.
So, this is not an in-perpetuity plan, it's where we are today, given the current condition.
Got it, yep, even still.
And they periodically update them, you know, every five or ten years, or something like that, anyway, depending what the property looks like.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $4,000 to assist in the development of a stewardship plan for MAP nine, Lot eleven, and a portion of MAP nine, Lot ten.
From the Conservation Fund.
Oh, the expenditure from the Conservation Fund.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, did any of you guys do the...
Any other questions for me while I'm, while I'm here?
The Department did it.
I don't have any, this board, no.
Did you do the walk?
No.
Yes, Kristen Lamb and I...
Well, thank you for enjoying it.
How was it?
It was great, we had, I don't know, sixteen, seventeen people, some families, a cross-section of people.
Nice. Good job, good.
It was great.
Awesome.
There's an article in the...
In the forum?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Too bad they didn't have the snow, about the town.
Yeah, right.
But we had signs instead of tracks.
It's not, it's not corporate.
Yeah, it's too bad.
We got some...
Yes, yes, we do. Why don't we start with Tyler?
I did.
Hand that down to Tyler, huh? So, all right.
Excuse me, review action items for next meeting.
Well, we don't really have nothing for next meeting, right? Because next meeting, you're gonna be electing officers, we're gonna be doing official house business, which we, we don't have other discussions on that night, do we?
Well, it depends on what's in the agenda.
Okay, because I don't have a plan anymore, when that meeting, they don't have anything else.
Mention another meeting.
I don't think it's gonna be necessary, but we'll, we'll know non, when we get done with non-public, if we, if we need to have, I'm hoping you don't, because I know you got a full day on Tuesday, and...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so if we don't have any other, Gene, do you have any...
I'll be right back.
Business?
No, thank you.
All right, so, there'll be no other business, we'll be then entering into non-public under ninety-one A, what was he, uh...
A, letter A. Two, A three, Roman two, sub A.
RSA ninety-one A three, Roman two.
A colon three, Roman two.
Roman two.
Yeah.
Can you tell me what's the subject is, please?
Personnel, A is personnel.
Personnel, all right, and then when we complete it on that, we'll be exiting non-public and adjourning the meeting, and then seal the minutes.
Waiting for Donna to get...
Waiting for Donna. Hope my voice holds up. Later this week, we'll push it back two days, since it's the day before the election. Really?
I wouldn't either. Is it the same day, are they telling you?
The in and out, so they say, but there's no complications, but you know how that goes. All right, you gotta sign these, too.
I'll make a motion, the Select Board enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two A.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call.
Hi, Donna Dinas.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, John Morton.
Okay. Thank you, Gene, have a good night.
Hi, Donna.
Hi, Gene.